Good morning. It is Tuesday, December 21st, 2021, and I'll call the order the Story County Board of Supervisors. Please stand if you are able and join us to take the flip to the region.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in its own good liberty and justice for all.
Any changes to today's agenda? If not, is there a motion to adopt today's agenda? Then move to second with Markin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Kevin.
Aye.
Now to the public comment. Does comment here for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If anyone would like to make public comment in the meeting room, please come forward. If you're on Zoom, either unmute yourself or use the raise hand functions that we can unmute you to speak. Not seeing anyone come forward here. It doesn't look like anyone. Bryce, are you seeing anything? Nope. Okay, then we will close public comment number one. We'll be bonded consideration of our proclamation recognizing January 2022, January 2022, the radon awareness month. Whereas radon is a colorless, odorless, natural occurring radioactive gas that threatens the health of our citizens. And whereas radon is the second leading cause of lung cancer deaths in the United States is the number one among non-smokers. And whereas one in 15 homes across the US has an elevated radon level. And whereas any home in Story County may have an elevated level of radon, even if other homes in the same neighborhood do not. And whereas testing for radon is simple and inexpensive, and whereas identified radon problems can be fixed. And whereas educating Story County residents about how radons can adversely impact personal health and.
Whereas Story County Iowa and the US Environmental Protection Agency are supporting efforts to encourage Americans to test their homes for radon, mitigate elevated levels of radon and build new homes with radon resistant materials and features. Now therefore be resolved and with the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim January 2022 as radon awareness month and encourages the citizens of Story County to educate themselves and others on radon awareness, test their homes for radon, mitigate elevated levels of radon and build new homes with radon resistant techniques. And move the adoption of proclamation.
They moved to seconded, Markin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Kevin.
Aye.
Confirmation is adopted. We have no agency reports, considerations of the 12, 14 minutes we've able to email to us and ask for the hard copy. I think. It moved to seconded. You did move that?
Aye.
No. Okay, okay, that's what I thought. So Basil.
Aye.
Markin.
Aye.
Kevin.
Aye.
Lisa.
Yes. Oh, yes, yes. With, with you want to do that right now with the proclamation?
Sure.
Yeah. Second consideration of personnel action. Personnel action. Second. The defendant's seconded, Basil.
Aye.
Markin.
Aye.
Kevin.
Aye.
Please. Question on the 12, 23 claim.
I approve of claims presented.
Second. The defendant's seconded, Markin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Kevin.
Aye.
Consent agenda. Is anyone pulling anything from today's consent agenda? Okay.
I will move to consent agenda.
Second. That moved to seconded, Markin. Or excuse me, Basil.
Aye.
Markin.
Aye.
Good. And I for myself. All right, now we have onto public hearing items. We have the second consideration of ordinance number 298, amending chapter 86, the district requirement, chapter 85 general provisions and chapter 88 general site and plan standards with Story County Land Development Regulation.
Morning.
Good morning, Andrea.
This is the second consideration of ordinance 298, which we heard about last week, December 14th, that you moved to approve with one change to provisions for non-commercial livestock. So again, this ordinance just covers some updates to the general site planning standards, you know, fences with poles, traffic impact analysis, and then the big one would be the non-commercial livestock provisions included therein. A plan zoning commission recommended that they be approved on their surprise meeting, first consideration. Again, we were directed to make one change, which I have on the slide up there regarding the newer disposal. Previously, it just stated that individuals need to follow state or federal regulations that may apply to discharges of the United, or waters of the United States. We updated that for your direction to have the actual citation for state code and for the federal regulation. We spoke with someone from the DNR, environmental specialist, who provided those two state code sections to us that they would follow. The DNR handles the MPDS permits, National Flutent Discharge Elimination System permits for manure discharges that is pursuant to an EPA regulation that allows states to handle that permitting process. It's under their authority. So we cited two portions of chapter 567 of the Iowa Administrative Code and updated it with that language that you see there. That was the one change. Otherwise, the ordinance stayed as it was. We have not received any public comments since the first hearing. I know the English Tribune ran a story on the ordinance as well, and we still have not received any public comments about that. So our recommendation would be that ordinance 298 to be approved on second consideration and waive third consideration, other alternatives. Drop on the slide there, either approve and set a third consideration for next week, deny and set second consideration for next week, or remand it back to staff for more information. Any questions on updated language?
Questions? Yeah.
For putting that citation and I'm not going to include that in the motion because we asked for that before. So it's going to move alternative one.
Public hearing.
Sorry.
Yeah. Now I've done it before, so.
I'll stop here.
Yeah, so I will open the public hearing. If anyone would like to make comments on ordinance number 298, if you're on Zoom, please press T or use the raise hand function. If you're in the public meeting room, please come forward. We'll wait a few seconds and see if anyone would like to make public comment. Are you seeing anyone? Right. We're not thinking anyone who's want to make public comments. So both public comments, very, our public comment on the ordinance 298. Now we're ready for a motion.
And I will move approval of ordinance 298 on second consideration and wait for consideration.
Second. They moved to seconded, Markin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Kevin.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is another public hearing item, second consideration of ordinance number 299, amending certain factors of the official zoning in Story County, Iowa.
Morning, board. So this is the second consideration for the resounding request that you all heard last week for a whole of resounding. We have never seen any comments from any public since that meeting. You all approved and set the meeting for today for the second consideration, and we're recommending waiting for the third consideration. So there are alternatives with staff recommending option one, just approval on second consideration, waiting a third.
Any other questions or? Okay, this is a public hearing, so we will open the public hearing. If you're on Zoom, please use the raise hand function. If you're in the public meeting room, please come forward to make comments. Wait a few seconds to see if anyone wants to make public comment. I am not seeing anyone. Bryce, are you seeing anything? Nope. Okay, so then we will close the, the hearing on ordinance number 299. For motion.
I approve of ordinance 299, amending certain factors, the official zoning not in Story County on second consideration and making first consideration.
Second. They moved to seconded, Basil.
Aye.
Markin.
Aye.
Kevin.
Aye.
Good morning. Have a good day.
You too.
Now we'll move on to additional items. We have a discussion and consideration of a recommendation by the Story County Board of Health. I know that Dr. Passion is here, the, for the Board of Supervisors to require all employees to submit proof of COVID-19 vaccination or unvaccinated weekly through a negative COVID-19 test. Dr. Passion, if you want to come forward.
Yeah. Cool to the bench.
Yeah. Please come up to the table.
And that used to be in other sense.
Yeah. If you would just state your name.
Okay, my name is John Passion. I'm the chairman of the Story County Board of Health. Okay, so basically, I'm here to reiterate our request that the Board of Supervisors require all employees to be vaccinated or submit to a test weekly to make sure that they're not COVID positive. We still think this is phenomenally reasonable, considering the outbreak that we've had with the Delta and we're probably having, going to have soon with the Omicron. We still think this is a very reasonable request and we'd like you to reconsider. No, you didn't want to do it before because there is a lot of legal issues going on. And the current law that states that we allow people to get out of a vaccine requirement by religious exemptions or even the state said personally, so you feel that it would hurt them or someone in their family if they got it. There's nothing in those laws that state you can't require them to test. And certainly, as I remember when we developed our, when not we, when the hospital developed its flu vaccine requirement, that's what they said. You've got a waiver, it's against your religion, just wear a mask while during flu season. So that's how they got out of it. And I still think it's a very reasonable thing to do, and the Board of Health agreed with that. So there's been some changes, legal issues have come up. The law that was struck down in Iowa has been now upheld. Biden administration's OSHA requirement has been upheld. The federal Supreme Court has ruled against people who have been fired because they refused vaccinations. So things are changing, you know, and these, I think it's, I think it's time that Story County does it. Can, can I ask, as you're thinking about what they asked me, how many people would this affect? You'd mentioned to me, Lisa, that there's not a lot that would affect that you'd be, be directly under.
Right, right. If it's not an OSHA requirement or a safety requirement.
So it doesn't reach the hundred?
It, it, our authority, from my understanding, from our county attorney's office, it's only the entity or the people that are under the Board of Supervisors. The other elected officials can opt to adopt or not adopt the policy. So I don't have authority over those elected officials' offices or how they, how they oversee or run their office.
So.
That's a good, that's a good number. I can't tell you the exact number. About around 280 employees total, I believe. More than 50% work for elected officials. So.
Our largest department works. Alyssa, we can't hear you.
All right.
Yeah. One, we need to be sure.
One elected office has 90 employees, so that, that's a pretty good chunk of our 280 FTEs. And then we have other, you know, other large offices. So I would, I'd have to go pull up the numbers. I don't know it off the top of my head. I would say at least 50% are, are under elected. Like I said, I'd have to go.
Forty.
Yeah.
Just looking at that number.
So.
Yes, and so that is around 50.
Yeah.
So that's a concern that would be there. That we can't and bond the other elected official.
And, and we all have to work within the, within the rule of law. And certainly when you consider the mask mandate, that's exactly what you did. And, and I'm not suggesting anything else. But as I read the laws that involve this, none of them talk at all about testing. And most places that have talked about putting this in play have made it the responsibility of the people to come up with the person who decides not to vaccinate. They have to come up on Monday with a negative COVID test, and they have to decide where to get it.
But it would still depend on whether the elected official was requiring his order.
But you, but, but, right, exactly. But you, as the Board of Supervisors, have some authority over people directly that above and beyond that.
No.
You have none? You have no, you have no authority?
Only over our department. We don't have, we don't have authority over. So we would potentially be looking at a policy that applies to only part of the county.
Yeah.
Yeah, some employees.
But every person that you can get vaccinated or protects everyone else against COVID is worthwhile. And with every single person and every single entity that does this, more and more will feel the strength and will feel that there is the ability to do it. I know that we're connected very closely where I work with the hospital, what the hospital does, we do, vice versa. It's the same type of thing. And so that's why I still think it's a very reasonable thing to do. And just because it will only affect half a dozen people maybe or whatever, that's still people that it will affect, and it should. And it's a great statement. That the Story County Board of Supervisors requires people to be vaccinated or they, or they submit a test weekly. And as you all know, symbolism is a lot.
I'm not sure if my question is going to be directed at Alyssa or the county attorney's office, but.
They would have to look at it, of course.
Yeah.
And things are changing.
Right, right.
So rapidly right now.
I guess my question is, I know there's some changes. I, I don't know that we've gotten third direction from OSHA yet, is that correct? I know there's been some language to say, you know, we're going to start at this particular time.
Right.
It's still all wrapped up in the courts. And the, and the issue is of supply as well and how it's administered. So I'm kind of looking at you, Alyssa, and I don't know if you need to come back up to help to respond.
The, the, the court rulings, the one thing that was holding everything up was that court ruling, I think in Southeast Iowa, that said that the Biden administration and CMS guidelines overshot their, their borders, but that's been struck down. And unless it goes up to the federal Supreme Court, looks like they're going to go. I mean, really, what we're hearing is that they're going to go February 7th. They delayed it a little bit to allow employees, employers to start working on policy. But apparently we have to show all our, because the organizations I'm involved with, they have more than 100 employees, and they have to start showing good faith efforts that they're moving in that direction.
It has been appealed to the US Supreme Court.
The what?
It has been appealed to the US Supreme.
Of course. Yeah, absolutely. But even the laws that are stated now, you still can do it. I mean, really, there's nothing stopping you. There's no law out there that stops you from making a vaccine mandate. There was, some of the state laws say that if you discharge someone because of it, that you have to treat them a certain way, but that says nothing about that you can't put a vaccine mandate as opposed to the mask mandate. There was a clear law stated that you could not make a mask mandate, that everyone is obviously not listening to anymore. And, and the other thing too is the law state, there is nothing in the law that states anything about testing, requiring testing. And as long as you're applying it equally to everybody, I can't think, and I'm not a lawyer, but the law is a common sense issue. And if you, you know, it's, it's, I mean, you're going to, obviously, you're going to have to get a legal opinion. But you can do it. You can do it.
I think the question is what you just said, is applying it equally to everyone, which is.
Everyone under your, well, you even said you're only, you only supervise a group of people. All those that are equal.
Oh, our county attorney made a comment and we could.
On December 30th.
All litigation then elevated for appeal. Actually, it might be easier. Tim, are you able to unmute yourself or can we unmute?
But, but you know, the question I ask of Timothy Mills is, it said, these laws state nothing about a vaccine, you know, requirement. I, I, if, if there are laws that says that we cannot have a vaccine requirement, I'd like to see them because the laws state that, you know, if someone is discharged because there's a vaccine requirement, because they don't take a vaccine, that you have to treat them a certain way. I mean, I've got a copy. I've been reading it a fair amount, you know, and so I know everyone's afraid of getting sued, but as a physician, something I've learned real quickly is you can get sued for anything at any time. That's our legal system. That's just the way it is. And you have to kind of consider this is the right thing to do.
County Attorney Mills, you would put a comment into the chat, but I just wonder if you could just state your comment.
Sure, can, can you hear me?
I can.
Sure. So all the litigation has been consolidated to appeal for the Supreme Court, and the briefing on the issue of whether there'll be a stay is due on December 30th. Now, my advice is to wait until at least December 30th before taking up the issue, although Iowa law currently says that you can have a vaccine requirement. It also states that employees can basically state a personal or religious reason, which I don't think you can inquire further into as to not get vaccinated. And I think requiring them to weekly test in lieu of vaccination implies a vaccination requirement. I just, I think the intent of the law is to not require employees who don't want to be vaccinated, to not be vaccinated. I think the best course of action is to wait for this issue to work through the courts on the, through the Supreme Court and see what happens then.
Thanks for your comment.
So, so, so if I heard this correctly, and please, I want to make sure I heard this correctly, was that you can make a vaccine requirement, and there's no thing in the law that states about the requiring testing. Did I hear that correctly, Mr. Mills?
Tim, I think you're still muted.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understand it correctly.
That's correct, but basically Iowa's law is, is that if you have an objection for personal or religious reasons, you can opt out of a vaccination requirement as an employee, and the county will, the employer will be required to pay you unemployment if you are discharged. And further, our, our unemployment will go up as a result of that, if people are discharged.
Right, and, and exactly. And like I said, when people, when this was started at Mary Greeley, the, if someone had a a religious exemption or a medical exemption, they just wore a mask during flu season. And there was, and so we're, you, you're not saying, we're not asking, the Board of Health is not asking Board of Supervisors to go against the law by any means. If people wish to opt out and they wish to make a statement, they can, of course, because that's what the state laws set. But you can still require them to test.
Supervisor, Markin, would you have a question?
Okay.
Comment for that connection or? County Attorney Carol, Alyssa.
And please understand, I do not wish to, and the Board of Health does not wish to put the Board of Supervisors at a uncomfortable position by any means. It's just, the hospitals are still filled up. Beds are still being, people are being turned away. People are being in emergency room, in our emergency room for hours on end as they're waiting for a bed. I actually am able to look at our ICU population every day when I sign into the clinic, and I'm amazed at how many people are in the ICU, not just with COVID, but with other things. But it's, it's really stressing the medical system. It really is. And right now, the single best tool we have is vaccination. Master good. Vaccinations are better.
My concern is that the folks who are not vaccinated right now. I don't, I don't see a requirement changing their mind. So my concern is that we then end up with a situation where a bunch of employees because they decide to go work somewhere else. And then we don't have the staff.
It is a concern that very many, that virtually all organizations have when they put in something like this, but it hasn't happened yet. We have not had a big exodus of employees. There has not been a reported case of any organization that has, when they put in a vaccine requirement. And you're giving them an out, and the out is that they can get tested. And you might even be able to argue the legality of having to pay them unemployment benefits because you won't be firing if they refuse it. You're not firing them for not wearing a mask, you're firing them for not, or you're not firing them for getting back, not getting vaccinated. You're firing them for not submitting a test. That'd be a great, that'd be a great legal argument and be an interesting one. So, you know, this is something that we hear throughout, but it just hasn't happened. And really, and I'll give you, I knew, I know a patient's family who's the husband didn't want to, and his organization required that he gets vaccinated frequently, or not vaccinated, tested frequently. Finally came in the other day with his kids, and he said, yeah, he got the vaccine. Finally came in the other day with his kids and he said, yeah, he got the vaccine. He just got worn down. And got another person vaccinated. And that's worthwhile.
I, I agree. I think it is worthwhile. I think, I think every single person. Every single official person vaccinated is important.
And, and it's a very, and I, I know there's, there's always nervousness when this is done. I'm sure. I mean, again, we're struggling with it also. Still an emergency here.
I listen to you at the Board of Health on this and all the research I've done as well. Obviously, I listen to my assistant physician as well. So certainly, Mary, I struggled with, which I thought would be so much easier to make a determination on. I think my one question that I have her is that if we're not following an OSHA requirement where it impacts everyone universally, it's only impacting just a few. And it may be the few that are all vaccinated. So you are not impacting, I, I, I don't know. I'm just saying, I don't know from what, who we have, who, who the board would have authority over. I don't know if he's vaccinated or not, so I'm just giving you an example. It may be impacting them if it's not an OSHA requirement, only those that are already vaccinated. So you are not then potentially capturing those that are not vaccinated, vaccinated if I don't have that. If we don't have that kind of authority over, over other departments.
Right, right. And I, I understand it. I, I really do. And I, I understand where you're coming from in that respect. But you do have people under you, you know, and, and you do have people where will affect. And I don't know if you know how many are not vaccinated. You know, there's a very good chance you don't. And, and it will just come out. And again, where places that do this, the better it's going to be. I bring up the fact that Mississippi, the state of Mississippi, has the highest rate of children coming into kindergarten completely vaccinated of any state in the country. Because they do not read, they only allow medical exemptions for vaccines. They do not allow religious or personal exemptions. And, and you can figure out how many of those are. And so really, it's like, you know, people say that, you know, mandates and stuff don't work, but they actually do. And the more that do it, others will follow suit. Or can follow suit. Remember, you're leaders of this county. You are the leaders.
Well, county attorney's chat said what was on December 30th?
They're gonna say there's a state. And, and you realize that even if there's a state, even if there's a state, even if the current laws are in place, you can still do. If the current laws state that you can make a vaccine mandate and plan required testing. Yeah. No, I mean, that's what I said. Yeah. You know, and, and I understand you want someone else to tell you what to do. You know, and you want to say, we don't have a choice.
I don't think that's the situation. My issue. My issue is that this is a stone flux. It can go back and forth. It can be changing every time we turn around. If there's a stay, if there's this or that. I think, and I do understand, there's a great article, a few pieces in the Times this morning that basically said exactly what you're saying, that mandates do work. A lot of the other things don't work. Scare tactics don't work. This or that doesn't work. I'm thinking about that as, as you've been talking. But no, I, I think we saw additional confusion if we're in a situation where things may be here today, something different tomorrow. I do know there is, I understand the sense of urgency, but I would just assume wait a little more time to see this shake out before we make a decision. That's my, that's before we make a decision. If we end up not making a decision, it's made at another level. Okay, but I just want, I want more information on, I want more of what's going to happen in the next few days.
I guess I have another question for the county attorney. Tim, I guess my question would be if, if there is a state, if this Supreme Court would break that up, could they also put additional parameters on a stay? Or is it just based on what, what they're appealing?
It's just based on what they're appealing. And we'll have to wait and see what the briefing says. It's due on December 30th. To see what the parameters of the state will be.
Because as I understand it, the OSHA requirement only applies to businesses that have more than a hundred people in it. Isn't that correct?
That's our understanding. That's, yeah, that's our.
Yeah, that's our, yeah, that's our understanding too. And CMS is, the CMS guidelines, which are basically the same, apply to hospitals that take Medicare.
And has that been stayed, has that been lifted?
I think because it was tied into that. They both were, but then since the federal court appeals overwrote it, but now, you know, the brief in front of the Federal Supreme Court. We'll see what happens.
I, I do think it's an interesting question, whether or not it would apply to, the OSHA requirement would apply to Story County as the employees of Story County work for elected officials and are, so they're employees of the county, but they're also considered employees of the elected official who, who has discretion on what policies the elected officials want to require of their, of their employees at the same time. So an argument could be made that it does apply to, to Story County because all those employees are being paid by the county. Yet not subject to all of the county's policy based on the discretion of the elected official.
The difference between a county policy and OSHA reg, isn't it, Tim? I, I see those distinctly different.
So like I said, that is an interesting, and I'd have to look at that further. OSHA requirements applying to a certain group of people, a hundred or more, whether that would encompass all of the people that are paid by Story County.
If we were under the impression that it would, so I, I guess I would like to hear more after you've looked at this.
Yeah.
And I don't have an answer for you right now on that.
Well, thank you for your time. Hope you consider it strongly. Remember, our recommendation is still out there. I brought it up today just to kind of remind you that. So I don't want to take that recommendation away. I don't want to rescind it. I'd like to make it very clear that we still recommend it. If things change to the point that we do not recommend it, trust us, the Board of Health will let you know. Right now, we still recommend this strong. Okay? Great. Okay. Thank you very much.
Next, we'll move on to consideration of updating the travel policy.
It is the morning, right? Yes. Okay. So December, right? Um, I did send a notification to all department heads and elected officials about this. This was actually legislation, I believe, that passed in 2020. I don't think we were really, no county was focused on travel or conferences at the time. So this code section, 80.45A goes into effect on January 1st. There's been a, I think Stacy Heron should bring, who first brought it to our attention. And then also the auditors affiliate, all 99 counties have been talking about this, so. I know that there are certain county employees that may have been sort of caught, like nothing, it doesn't go into effect yet. Hotels and motels, I think, are ramping up, training their employees. I, my understanding is, you know, they've had a lot of staff turnover and probably didn't want to. Either they lost trained staff or they didn't want to, they want to train them close to the date, so there weren't, they're not a huge number of certifications out on this website yet. But I, I also know that the Iowa State Association of Counties is working with those affiliates that do have upcoming trainings and overnight, so this change is just for Iowa providers. Doesn't affect out of state travel. I think most of our county travel is within the state of Iowa. So I just, I modeled the additions based on what we do for, you know, the per diem rate, any place we go. I updated the request for travel authority the same way. Yeah, this has been reviewed by Ethan Anderson and he had no changes. Also, Alyssa Lignol looked at it and Lisa Markley at my office, so pretty straightforward. It's a shell from the code. I did request that the board waive seven day review because we don't have a choice in this matter. I'm not saying we can't have a productive, interesting conversation about the travel policy. I just don't think this is the time to do it, so. I did also look at our credit card policy. I don't think that needs to be updated. This just refers back to that and it's pretty clear about what you can or cannot use, so.
So you should just take the fact January 1st?
Yes. The code, the, the code changed it, yeah.
So Alyssa, this will probably go to you. So I know there have been some travel requests. I honestly can't remember some of them. I know some that out of state, some in state are, would then you be putting out like a notification for folks to look to make sure that they are combined with, you know, or if they've made travel arrangements, it was before this policy came up or before we were kind of aware of anyone are impacted with something about those individuals. Do you get what I'm saying? I'm just saying, how would we, how, how would you plan to notify people who have already, or would this be a Lucy question?
Yeah, I mean, the travel, request for travel authority are filed in the auditor's office, so if the board chooses to pass this today and waive the review, I'll send somebody off to all users saying if you do have a current one for track that you've submitted, but the travel will take place after January 1st. You, we would ask you to make revisions and check that and attach any additional documentation that would be required.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
And just to share out loud, this, this additional training that hotels and such are required to do is, is.
It's, it's not required that they do it, but if they want county or, you know, Iowa government employees to use their facilities, then basically it says we cannot reimburse, we cannot reimburse for those costs. So if there's a hard incentive, I guess, for them to, to train their employees.
This is a human trafficking.
Yeah. Oh, sorry. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't get, do a little explain at the beginning. So this is to recognize the signs of human trafficking for hotel and motel staff that provide lodging. I think bed and breakfast campsites, anything like that is also included, so. I know ISAC is working with a conservation affiliate because they, for people that have cabins and conference centers, so.
Yeah, I, I know it's, it's caught. Transition always cause a little bit of.
Yeah, I think we would have been a lot more focused on this if this had not passed, you know, a year when, when there was a lot of other stuff going on and also, you know, pretty much travel and conferences stopped, so it wasn't on any, wasn't really a hot topic at the time, so.
I would move approval of the updated travel policy within the seven day review and also of the updated request for travel.
See you next week.
Go up here.
Yeah. Next up is discussion and consideration of replacing the risk manager position with a human resources coordinator. Good morning, board. Good morning. Always look at the clock. Good morning.
This is just a continuation from our discussion last week. I didn't make a lot of changes to the job descriptions. I did move up some of the essential function, functions, so that was clear as far as what this position was responsible for. And that's pretty much all I, I changed. I don't know if anybody has any additional questions regarding this position. Sorry.
I'm glad you moved us.
Yeah.
Because the way you're discussing it, those are really the primary focus position that they were down further. And I think, I think just that placement helps. And I do understand that you're looking to try to get some redundancy and get some of the more clerical tasks on your shoulders while still maintaining, you know, policy overview of those issues, so.
Yeah, this position will assist with pretty much all the functions of HR. Their main responsibilities will be work on safety. That they will pitch it when needed, when we need some help during our busy times, so.
That was, that was a simple change, but I think it really.
It helps. Yep.
Yeah, I appreciate.
Yeah, and I think it would be clear, if, if approved, it'll be clearer too when we post it, kind of what the position will. There won't be any questions as what we'll really be doing and focusing on for the majority of their, of their time for work hours, so, yeah.
Approval of replacing the risk management position with human resources. Thank you, Lauren. Thank you. Next, we have discussion and consideration of story county asset funding allocation to the asset process for.
So the information before you this morning is to provide you with the requests for asset funds from the agencies and also to ask the board what level of funding you want to make available for FY 23. As you can see, there are some significant increases in requests. But in the past, the board has increased anywhere from, I would say, three to five percent or so. Last year was an increase of five percent. So it's up to the board what level of funding you want to make available. And so right now, I'm only bringing forward those requests and getting your information about the funding. And then in February, I'll be back to provide information on the recommendations that the volunteers made during the January asset allocation process. Any questions?
Just for clarification for me, are we going to talk about it this morning? Not all of the requests that are on the spreadsheet are ones that. Not all of the requests that are on the spreadsheet are ones that the county has historically funded. It's, it's all the requests?
Yes, that is correct, and there are some new requests, and I tried to mark those for your information. One of the agencies on here, Friends of CASA, Friends of Court Appointed, Special Advocate, that is an agency that is new to asset. There are also new requests on here from agencies that were already part of asset, but may not have made a request or had a request approved by the board, like the YWCA has a request on here. They had a request last year, but those, the volunteers did not recommend approval. So that one didn't come back, but then they made another request of the board this year. So it's an agency that's, it's relatively new to asset, but it was a part of asset last year. But the board has not traditionally funded the YWCA. There are a couple of new requests from YSS. YSS is certainly one of those agencies that has been with asset for quite a while, but has some new requests on here. One is for Kids Club, Colonesco, and then the other is for Transitional Housing Services, Rapid Rehousing. And that Rapid Rehousing request, that is not one of the services that the board has funded in the past because of the rent utilities that the board makes available assistance that it makes available through community services. It has not funded those types of requests. And when YSS brought that request forward to the admin team, they were advised that they probably would not get the full $52,000 from asset. However, the request was made for the full $52,000, and it was made to come from the county. But that is something that I would be advising the volunteers not to recommend approval because of the board's history with not approving those types of requests. And you are aware that YSS has made a similar request through, for our refunds for this type of service. So public health request. Correct, they did not request an increase last year because they didn't think they would be able to draw down all their funding. They're correct. The board did approve a $50 increase. But this year, they came back with no increase request. The, the local option, let's do some math, it wasn't on the spreadsheet. It looks like that was a 6.3%. Okay. Okay. I'll check that again. I just kind of wanted to count that number. I see what you're saying, yeah. I didn't have that on here. I've got, yeah, 6%. 6.3. 6.3, yeah. Founding. And I did a little bit of on looking at the general basic. And without the large, the large request that you pointed out, the new request. And I just check because I'm not sure if I need to keep that. But larger request taken out, it looks like the increase is about 7.7%. Which increases did you take out? Well, I took out the cost, just because it was new. Took out 16, 16,000 YSS, 2,000 YSS. About 224 per each home, and I was confused by this. I mean, this isn't a funding request, and they have all the ionizations. But I was, they were increasing so, so hugely that I assumed there were new projects there, but I, we don't know what they are, so. So this is kind of a difficult one to say where we're going on it. But I took out the increase there. It was such a, said such a large increase, I assumed it was in programs. Well, I, I think the message they're trying to convey is that their funding has not kept pace with the need. You know, the need in the size of a county has grown, and the, the size of the shelter, for example, has not grown with that since, I believe, about the 80s. And so it really seems like it's probably that time where the board needs to determine, you know, if what we currently have matches our current need. And in order to, I think, make a sound decision on that, we probably need to do some research and try and figure that out.
So what you're looking for is what percentage we like to put in towards general basic or local or whatever. And that, say, let's the other changes in the same thing, the United Way, I assume, was what percentage they're wanting to do. I'm just reading what you had said earlier. And then as a team, you will determine what percentage of the total allocations or initial increases, what each of these entities, the amount that each entity will receive.
That is correct. Once every funder puts their funding in the pot, then it will be determined how that will be distributed among the agencies based on their requests and the volunteers. The hearings are in January, early January, 5th and 6th. Each agency will come before the asset board, and there will be questions asked of them. And then from that, that following week, there will be three days of work sessions, and the volunteers will make their recommendations known at that time based on all of the information that they have from the, what the agency said that they needed, from what the funders said, what their priorities, from the liaison reports, from the scorecards, and the outcomes that the agencies are achieving. And all of that information put together, they will base their recommendations on that. But I have one question. Why isn't in your letter do you have administrative services as a separate line when it's under general basic? Um. If I didn't, I should have noted that it's not included in the total. And I just left it that same format because that's the format that I was used to. But if that's confusing for the board, I can put that below general basic because it's not included in the total. And I should have made that note. I didn't know myself. Okay. Yeah, I should have included that in the comments. That's correct, and it's always been just requested separately. Yeah, I would say next year, school and out there. Okay. Say the funding is maybe other general basic or something like that. Yeah, that's where the funding comes from, but it's not included in this total, if you're correct.
Wait, can you say that again?
I said that the funding for administrative services comes from general basic, but it's not included in this total. This total is just based, is just the funding that will be distributed to the agencies.
It's not in that, in the blue.
Yeah, that's.
Not in the blue that, that line or.
But when the auditor's office takes this and puts together the budget for FY '23, it will be included in general. I, I provide Lisa Markley a separate spreadsheet that lists all of that information, and I have a note included that, that's separate from what was distributed to the agencies.
Okay, thank you. Okay, okay, thank you. So make motion versus discretion. Sure. At 8% on general basic. That local motion, 0% public health and 3% of. 13% admin. Administrative services. There, you asked to do this for, for this discussion. I don't disagree with this, the need fully being on that age of general basic. I'm just, I'm just trying to test sustainability. Will these agencies, or, you know, the amount that we put forth, again, I'm not against it, I'm just kind of talking out loud. That's how you say it, or whatever, just trying to think of, I think, what was it? Last year, we did 5%. The year before, we did 5% as well. But I do know the need, and I know with inflation and other costs for some of the services that folks are trying to provide, trying to get staffing in as well. Maybe there is maybe a need for more, so. Probably talking around myself, kind of, yes, this is too high, but at the same time, I'm saying, okay, gosh, this number's too low.
Right, well, and that's kind of what I was thinking is, when I just did my little bit of math on this, I took out some of the larger things. But, you know, we're not making those decisions there. We're asking the volunteers to do that, and they may see some need to put more money in there. I just kind of did this because we're coming up with some numbers that make sense. But I think if we go 8%, that gives the volunteers some leeway, maybe not to say we're going to fund everything, because they can't fund everything. But that gives them a little more leeway when they're making some very difficult choices. And I think we are, we are looking at, I know it's Salvation Army asks for a whole lot more for the country. I don't think they did that, you know, cavalierly. I think they did that, you know, I think those kind of things are based on, really based on need. And I'm not, I'm, I'm not singling them out for any special reason other than it just kind of struck me, oh, my gosh. Um, and I know that United Way did help with, you know, the monies, you know, and. I just, I just think that it's probably the, the volunteers are doing a very tough job. And if we can put a little more money in this year than we have done the last couple, I think that may help them in some of those needs.
I think, I think the point about inflation is a really important area. And the struggle to find and keep qualified staff, I think are both really important factors. So, okay, if I, if I did it right, an 8% would be a $96,919. Increase, increase. And 10% would be 121,149. And it's kind of, before we came in this morning, ran all the different percentages because. Stay with those numbers again. 8% is a 9, 96,919 and some change. 7% is 84, 804. 10% is 121,149. And these are the.
That's on general basic.
Yeah, that's just general basic, yeah. Yeah, I mean, certainly know that the need is out there. You know, we had agencies come before us, if you're talking about how the impact of this past year, you know, the pandemic, how it has impacted us. The volume of people seeking services. Certainly, you know, just referencing the food pantry, either from, well, I guess, several more, the need to, there's the pantry and the end, the others. And also just the general, in my personal home mail that I receive for donations, contributions to agents who need them to help address that, that needs, or the rising needs right off within the county.
I know we're, we're also seeing some of these larger requests in our ARBA applications.
Right.
And that might be, not, well, we haven't made any decisions there, but I'm just, I'm just hugging the fact that they are also in that mix. If you add in, and the cost is the new agency that's eligible. So I don't know that it made sense for me to take that out. We'll factor in what's supposed to be in there. The request is only being made of the county. I don't know why they did that and not request any from the other funders, but that is what they did.
For, for which ones?
Friends of CASA. That does make a big difference. 7.7, 7.8. I, I just think. No. Looking at that, I can be a person. I'm, I'm still.
I don't have a problem with increase over what we did last year. They've certainly identified the need. I flipped through some of the, we gave us our big asset book about a week ago, so I've certainly looked through some of that. Definitely not all, but just kind of looked through some of that, particularly with the spreadsheet here that it would identify some of the increased percentage. I guess, the volume of people that they're serving. It's not necessarily that they're, for, for, not asking for any program. They've identified the volume of people they are, they're serving and anticipate to continue serving over the next, the next year. Like, it's the question, we, we do have a motion, is for discussion purposes, so how are we feeling with 8%, 6%, 0% or 3%? You provided some other percentages that, pretty good this, right now.
And if we can just go with the percent, when you make your decision, just give me the percent, and then I'll do the calculation so that I won't have to come back if we're off.
Yeah, sure. Yes, right, it's just easier for me to like, look at a percent and then really translate that into what does that really mean?
Yes.
As far as, as dollars, so. But I still make sure we have any other questions or anything involving kind of calculating. Wanted to make sure. I don't have any other questions. Okay, okay. So there is a motion on the floor for 8% for general basic, 6% for local options, 0% for public health, and 3% admin. I'm surprised that working, you made the motion, so.
I.
I, I.
Okay, so that's 8% for general basic, 6% for local options, 0% for public health, and 3% for admin.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. You don't have any departmental or other reports, upcoming agenda items? On the public forum number two, comments from the public that items not on this agenda, the board may not take any action on the comments to the requirements of both the meetings, but may be sold in future. Is there anyone who'd like to make public comment? You're on Zoom. Would you please use the raise hand function? A few seconds if anyone wants to make public comment. Do you? Seeing none, both, public comment, we're even on finance, committee meeting happy for the mountains.
Sure. Last night, we had a great training done by Emergency Management Administrator Morgan for jurisdiction executives. And tonight, the Emergency Management Commission meets to review the budget request for next year. And much else is really going on this week. We are slowing down. We have an ARPA session tomorrow. Oh, happy first day of winter to everybody. And best wishes to everybody for the happy holidays.
Thank you. Yeah, I was also at the training last night. It was a, the thorough training. Always makes me feel like I'm not prepared. Need to work harder to be more prepared. Just highlight all the possible things. But it's grateful for the pressure. Tonight, the city of Ames is having their climate action target setting meeting. So that's where I will be tonight. And then ARPA meeting tomorrow. Yeah, just a reminder that next week, we have the visit to the ISU Compost State operation, which is on Wednesday. But I'm really excited about when you see that. So it's my thing. That's all I have. And happy winter solstice. I have a session in there. There's a special board of health meeting to look at the, or the performance. So that's today at 3 o'clock. I have an ARPA meeting with ISAP tomorrow, Lisa Markley and I are part of it. And then we have the ARPA meeting in the afternoon. All that I have on my agenda. We are closed Friday and Monday. Holiday. And just want to wish everybody is safe and happy holiday. Or to visit everybody next week. Happy winter solstice. That was, that is their motion to adjourn.